Why, I say America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very same agenda, certain conflicts of interest. Agenda will be approved as written, reading of minutes.
May twentieth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine o'clock AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair presiding. Members present were Schultz, Dozark, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. The Board approved the clerk of court fees for April twenty twenty five. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Rossberg to approve the IDOT Federal Aid Agreement for Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Agreement. Number three dash twenty-five dash STBG dash S dash zero twenty. Project number STP dash S dash TSF dash CO two four one three five. Dash five P dash two twenty-four. HMA pavement widening, HMA resurfacing on County Road L fifty-one from South Corp limits of Charter Oak. South fourteen point nine miles to intersection with Highway thirty-seven. Motion was passed unanimously. At ten oh three o'clock AM, as advertised, a motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Hayden to open the public hearing regarding the budget amendment. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Motion passed unanimously unanimously. There were no written or oral objections. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg to close the public hearing at ten oh four o'clock AM. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozark to approve the following resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty for appropriations to increase in the following departments. Uh sheriff's attorney conservation courthouse for totals of two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Voting I with Schultz, Dozark, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rossberg. Motion was passed unanimously. Randy Man- Mankey discussed with the Board and the County Attorney and the Sheriff about the ongoing issues of dogs at large killing his. Farm birds and small animals on his property. There is discussion of a possible county ordinance. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Hayden to approve the following resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one for the Hazard Migation Assistance Program. Voting. Voting I was Schultz, Dozark, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rossberg. Motion was passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Schultz to approve the hiring of outside legal counsel. Christopher Mattson of Stewart Tinley Law Firm. That's an update from the ICAP. Motion was passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at eleven thirty-four o'clock AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Fridays at four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Corrections or comments?
Like holy smokes.
You did a good job.
Thanks.
Nice detailed report.
Hello.
We need a report from an hour.
What? Cool. We need to add hearing to our house.
Huh?
How come we never ever cover hearing?
Pretty human cast.
Yeah, I know, but still there's no hearing like coverage on your insurance or your health.
John says you have select appearance.
What?
I waited for that, it took a while to get a word out of us.
Yeah, I mean, that's something to think about.
If those hearing tests uh come back and say that you have poor hearing, will your medical take care of that if it's?
No, no, no coverage for hearing, you know, I mean.
Never had any luck with that.
Huh?
This the machine room we weren't rough, they're quiet, but yeah, I mean, they're.
Constant humming.
Outside, then you're exposed to the noise or. And I don't know why, I don't, I don't know, even when I worked at the packing house, I don't think covered for hearing.
That's why you don't hear much.
That's weird, because you can't hear.
Well, not for the start of the one in places, we never had to wear hearing techs in them when you did, if you wore it, you're a pussy, you know? Any.
They will look into it and see what.
Well, I didn't, yeah, my hearing was a little bit bad.
Honestly, first time anybody's really brought it up.
I know.
Another hearing test here. Just last week and uh. They they do a thing and and a a thing will say, say this word, and it says that I have like eighteen percent this year. And I mean, the damage is already done. And then when they combine the two, I got ninety-eight percent off that, but then. So fifty-eight hundred bucks if you get set up.
That's fifty dollars you can spare to join the Iowa Farm Bureau, you have price on any days. There you go. You become an Iowa Farm Bureau member, you get a hell of a discount on any day.
Do you not know that either?
I am one.
Membership six, plus a year. Fifty bucks for a membership, yeah.
Rigs up the question, I guess, is that your expenses.
Down to twenty-nine hundred bucks pretty quick, well, plus fifty, twenty-nine hundred.
Expenses that you would pay out of your pocket for your hearing tests lie towards your deductible. Is that correct?
I don't.
You don't know?
I don't think there's any coverage for.
Well, I just said covered, I just meant is that money that you spend out of your own pocket.
The hearing test you guys gave us.
That was free.
That's a good point, I'm curious.
Your makeup acid. Your makeup has been. Your manna does.
I went down.
For thirteen dollars a month.
The one that we guys done with.
Right, but I don't know if.
He doesn't, nobody's ever brought.
That BS.
That's not enough.
The whole stuff, the B S, I don't.
B S P.
I don't teach those bottom of your head. Changes.
B S P plant acid with the vision.
What, the old V S P plant acid?
So, or has it, we don't have that.
So if they have an option.
Thirteen dollars a month. When I look up hearing, we hearing insurance plans actually care credit for hearing. Uh pay for hearing aids and then across the blue shield comes up.
You can do it online.
There's a lot of it out there.
So, I mean, so.
Half black.
There are followers.
Long what the amendment before thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There might be some additional coverage.
There's a, there's a lot of other benefits of being a member of one too, but you know, that's what it got me. Nope, that just give me a thirty dollar there. Every, every year.
And when you don't want to be, you just cancel it, you got hearing needs.
Cool, thanks.
See, Henry heard that.
I'll do a little bit more research.
Yep.
Do a little bit more research.
Well, I didn't need it.
That's the, gets rid of the top secret paperwork.
Hannah Johnson, he's our main inner.
See, I didn't realize he was close to retiring.
We all are tired.
Well, we are, that's. I got a few years to go.
David, God.
Little ways. He's on the song. I know what yours is like.
Hey, trying to make this short and sweet, uh. With the talking with the NRCS and FSA office about the.
Oh, yeah, that lane or that right away.
Right away or.
Easement.
Easement. They told me as long as it's just to get in and out during harvest, there's no need, there would be no need to. Buy property back or anything of that nature, but they said the only thing would is if we was to. By the way, let's say like kill the grass or whatever, I have to go in and reseed it. So if any, if we wanted to come with any agreement with the Collins family, it'd be between us and them.
And it could be as simple as, hey, if the grass needs to be reseeded.
You'd need to pay the cost.
Yeah.
Right.
So we, are you going to talk to Colin?
I can, or, yeah, we could have him draw something up.
Kid, oh, Colin.
Yeah.
Colin drove something.
I mean, I, I didn't, you know, I'd have to tear some fence on, I'm guessing, but I would think leave that up to him to. Tear it off with gates, I would think, put gates in where he's gonna access and egress our properties or the surface there. That's. Maybe not.
It's there.
I mean, if there's not one, he wouldn't need to put a gate.
No, no.
According to them, it's just during harvest time, they didn't, so you need to, and if I access it in the spring too with like. Blinder disc, that's. What they, you mean, it was just on the, yeah, now there were trucks in the fall, so.
Okay.
Which I.
That's down, you know, so they, you might need something down to the ground.
Yeah.
Keep, you keep them on board, okay? So.
I'll talk to Colin about that, you know, draw up a simple. Even deal. Over there.
Sounds shit to me.
Then I was up to the key, right, if we're meeting. Highlight of that was we had an escape a week ago up there. Apparently kicked it out of the window there, it's not supposed to be able to be kicked out. But the kid was gone for a whole involving thirteen minutes from the S Center, so. The response time was good by the local authorities.
So you're better than Louisiana catching yours.
The sheriff of Cherokee County apprehended the kid, but the thing was that he says, they have ones on the windows? No, that kid, the staff heard the kid, oh, kicking on their feet on the window to get it out, but. They think this was a problem due to an earlier attempted escape back in January and stuff didn't get fixed quite right since the. Now they're working to reinforce the reinforcements, so.
Be hard.
I mean, you don't know.
The window, it kicked the window out.
The, the, what I just called screen or whatever, the bars or whatever, actually were able to get through that.
Really?
Yeah. So. And uh, I maybe know the, the bill that they had trying to get the equalization through the, that failed. Last minute deal, you say de equalization of payments due to all data detention centers. That came down to the pipeline debate in the Senate. Last minute, the Senate leadership was uh Lynn Evans that sponsored the. Demand of debate on the floor of the Senate was the one that was pushing the equalization bill.
So they punished him.
So they punished him and threw it out of the, took it out of the bill. So, we're satisfied.
It's frustrating.
Oh, sure.
So like Scott County, which just built their eight million dollar facility, their payment will be based off last year's eight million dollar facility and they'll get their cut of that. And you know, the rest of the defenses will be off their expense.
So when Scott County, you say Scott County, Scott County paid for that center, not the state?
Well, it's got now county detention center, however, there are state reimbursements and how like they charge for memberships or whatever, so.
Are they a county detention center or are they private like?
They're called Scott County, but I don't know if they have contracts with like us, where we're members of the S Center, I don't know if there's other.
County.
Counties as a member of counties with them, but.
How many beds, that bed at Scott County?
That I don't know, they did, were able to get some beds out of Polk County when they were building. Through it.
Cause there's a fixed number of beds for the whole state.
Yeah, I think a hundred and seventy-two beds for the whole state, I think.
How did they fix that?
Yeah, that's in the Congress.
The fixed number is. Debatable why that number's fixed, it should be. Must be for funding purposes, like when they allocate funds, they can allocate, right? That's the only, so when they're doing a budget, you know, they can only allocate so much, so. So unfortunately, back to the drawing board on that. Politics got in the way of that, so.
Yeah, it's a half.
That's holding our kids hostage and punishing them, you know, for politics. Just seeing a hundred and seventy-two beds.
I think it's a hundred and seventy-two beds. Two seventy-two and something like a hundred and seventy-two or two seventy-two beds statewide for juvenile detention. There's thirty or sixty sitting in Polk County that never get used. How many? I think it was sixty and they gave thirty to Scott County when they built their new detention.
I guess she was learning to see the cap on it.
No, I, I think maybe even so they know how much they need to allocate your budget season. Or juvenile detention, maybe.
Right.
Is they allocate so much per bed and then they just, you know, multiply.
You know, I heard the story. Not your accuracy, there is to this, but they blamed that if, or they claimed that if. There was a lot of beds, these detention centers would want to fill them so they could make more revenue. So that's why they kept, and that's just that I heard in discussions. And and the detention centers got a good argument that we know. When people are going to that or who's going, that's the judges. So they don't.
The judge places them and takes them off.
Yeah, I mean, detention centers are just tools, basically.
Okay, so if they hit that limit or or the judges, then.
That's a.
Their other hands tied that they can't.
So then you start to look for other places, you know, like states that send it, you know, like you've got them out of Nebraska and stuff. You know, I mean, and I think we've had some in in central Iowa that have been out of like Minnesota, even California.
Yeah.
But uh, just different things like that, and you see them sharing around, but the the thing is. Des Moines, Polk County is never gonna send you their good advice, they're gonna send you the one that you really, it's. That are hard to deal with.
So Polk County doesn't send them to their own detention center?
Well, they do, but when they get full, that their numbers.
Said there were sixty beds empty, Polk County.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's because they're lacking staff.
But they won't give them beds out to anybody else to use.
Bogart.
You know, Kyle, we have to budget for our JCO without having a cap like that, and we have to kind of go off of. The past history.
Very good point, dude.
And then we've had years, we we were there, we had to do a big budget amendment two years in a row because you can't predict.
You can't, you don't.
What kids are gonna be needed in the sentence detention.
Why should they act any different? Because I can.
Right.
Well, it's a system that broke or needs tweaked, uh, I mean, it's fixed, it needs fixing here, it's. You know, but it didn't get any closer to being fixed this session.
That's all I have, I feel working.
Craig?
I didn't have anything last week. Last February, last. Stacey's neck, don't you know, we have this, but.
You would think you'd be reminded, but that's okay.
Right.
I didn't have a whole lot, um, David asked me to check up on what that rate change, uh, the percentage change.
Yeah, yeah.
Effect, so according to the net, um, it will not affect us this year, dot, 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 if they approve our budget. So she's still waiting to see if that budget will be approved as presented. If they don't, what she's thinking they're gonna change is she has eight thousand dollars, there's a six thousand dollar cap on home visits and she has budgeted eight. Thousand dollars, so if they don't let that go through, that's gonna affect the county, because they're gonna have to come up with those funds. Um, uh, she's got some hoops, oral help is saved, there's, you know, she's was kind of going through the budget, the different things that will be affected by the caps that they have. So it's kind of to be continued based on uh what cuts they may possibly make on the budget, the way that she's presented it, but she's got her fingers crossed. That this year won't have any effects on that, so, so a little update. Um, one thing that struck out at me on this uh, these expenses is this ninety-two hundred dollars to E nine one one. What's that about, I, I forget over the years what we all, but it's uh. Data processing, E nine one one, nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five eighty-five, Master Street A, one thousand one hundred and sixteen consulting.
That stuff for the comps there?
Possibly, probably is, I mean, I could pull the claims and.
It seems like a lot, I, I kind of always look for the big numbers that jump out likely.
Well, when they have big numbers, that's usually what it is, the comp.
Yeah, they're usually updating some software or something out there, so. I mean, if you want me, I'll pull it.
I just, I just, just, just a number that I had. Don't routinely see and it fits.
Which.
Annual.
I wanted to broaden that out, because the, our nine one one fund, they might be changing drastically. I could pull that message.
State's taking it.
State taking it.
Oh.
So then, how's that work?
Our work then?
It's up to an area, I don't know how we're gonna.
Does that come along?
Funding our comps are made, I'm very difficult.
Or become our responsibility.
So we want a lower property tax.
Off of property tax.
We want a lower tax, but we're gonna turn them on.
Well, sort of.
That's because we have on constant.
But yet, it's being told this narrative that you local cities and counties tighten your belt.
Learn how to budget.
We're trying.
That was the quote I got when.
We don't need what you know.
Learn how to budget.
So was that state law, was that passed as far as the.
I got. Nine one one? I gotta find it here, it was Dwayne sent it to me, but apparently it was an error message, so I gotta find it, I.
Oh, okay.
I know, that's hard to find.
I also had a West Central Iowa Community Action uh meeting on Wednesday night, but I forgot to pack it at home, I thought it was in here, but I grabbed something else instead. So, but it was pretty short, uh, pretty routine. You know, just like anything else, watch it, the budget will focus on that. Workers, yeah, but uh, these are born well.
Rich, all that contributes?
Yeah, no, I, they're all, they're really, yeah, there's a lot of them, but uh, nice group of people, they do a really good service of their different things, so.
Who's, who's the director of that now?
Maybe.
Right, Wendy, she's very good leadership.
Fair.
She's very good.
Very good, meetings just kind of really move along, very informational, uh, very.
Charlie, she's still the president, Charlie Parker's from South County? Cause he does a good job.
Yeah, you hardly know he is, because she's kind of keeping it going, he's.
Just going down the agenda, getting things done.
It was, it was a short meeting, I'm not gonna lie, it was a very short, so.
And you were down in person?
I know, I just did Zoom. I did Zoom, I was, I was thinking about going.
Oh, you said you were thinking about going down.
I was, but then when I saw how short the agenda was, I thought, take me longer to get to her back, it'd be a big meeting and uh. There are really a lot of people that are on Zoom, very few people actually, so someday I will.
It's hard Zoom.
Yeah. Yeah, it's like a lot of information, but other than that, um, you know, a little talk about the dog ordinance, uh, people glad that we're finally getting. People addressing that, because there are dogs.
I did, I did do some research on the dog ordinances, it said two of them to Colin last week.
We're gonna have.
That different counties have.
Yeah, yeah.
I said, hey, just look through these, there's some good things in there that.
That we need.
That we certainly can use um for people that blatantly disregard.
Right, right, just like their dog.
And to give the people, the good people, an option of uh, from a legal standpoint.
Yeah.
To hold those people accountable.
Well, I think that the thing that concerned me the most is that, you know, if you call in that there's a problem, you know, the dispatchers know, well, we don't really have an ordinance. So that discourages anybody, they're just frustrated and they'll feel like they have no place to turn, you know, and having the state ordinance or state. Out there wasn't really helping us here in Crawford County, but they teeped it and they, and just like any ordinance, unless there's some teeth in it. It really, it's not, it's worthless, so we have to make sure what the resolve is to it follow through to the end if we don't get uh. Action out of these, so I think it's great that we're getting something on the books for that, so let's see what, what comes of it.
I, I did talk to Dr. Ranniger and Manning.
Uh huh.
With the weekend, and she expressed how nice the triple C S seemed to make.
Oh.
Turned out, and she got that, she was, she had blown away that.
What was she there for?
She's on the public health.
Oh, she's on the public health.
She's our, she's our doctor.
Oh, 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 oh.
She's the required person that we can't change out less than a.
She, she said that, she was, it turned out very, very nice.
Yeah, we had a very, it was very nice, uh, very, and uh, Roger has uh some folks that can help us move. The desks that need to be moved aren't necessarily that heavy, they're just cumbersome because they have the uh. Desk on the top and so just get them moved, there's literally three of them, but it won't take very long, so what we have to do is coordinate the weather. Having the timely lift truck and uh Roger will send some, some folks over to help us move those things, but they're moving. Uh, very uh methodically, and so I think that it's gonna happen here most soon. Uh, Kim actually called me uh last week to see, you know, if we can keep that moving, so we're keep going in the right direction, so that's about it.
Hi.
Uh. I uh. Head central, I have a good intention. And uh. It lasted till three Indiana.
Oh, oh, okay.
But a ninety percent of those closed sections, so sorry, can't tell you anything. I know ninety percent, but most of it, the, most of the discussion was because of that. And uh. They're trying to figure out where they're, certain, I, yeah, I'd love to tell you because just, it's kind of frustrating.
When the time is right, you will.
Hi, is there enough concern without saying anything that maybe we needed to, we needed to save our membership?
Um. I, I mean, as far as financial liabilities or potential like that, no. Uh, but they're. They're. Uh.
You know.
There's some things that, that, that bother, I'll, I'll tell you one thing that bothers me, this ain't got any good closed section. Um. The same thing that bothers me everywhere, like with the PTO or whether you got cop time and those frustrating issues where people bank and bank and bank and bank and bank and bank and bank. And they make a personal retirement account out of PTO. Especially when you're, you know, in a position where you kind of take off, and Tony's got like a hundred and fifty thousand ETO. If you'd have to pay him, it's just insane.
In fact, see, that will be.
Yeah. And I, I, I mean, when I was in the army, and I brought this up in the. Hundred and fifty, I mean, you got thirty, thirty days a year accumulated. Vacation time to go with that, that's all you had, you know? You didn't have all PTOs or all that cop time, it was vacation, you got up thirty. And it's like a year you get up to sixty if you didn't take it, well, after that, if you didn't use it, you'd lose it, sixty was the most you could have backed. Period. That's a good point. First of all, most people need to detox and go do something, just get away while you have a gig. But uh. If you didn't use it, you'd lose it, I mean, it's, it's, it goes to other things, we were talking about here earlier, and you don't know where your budget could go with third. Now this, you got kind of like, they got to run entirely of how much PTO's been saved up by every employee, but it's. It's a pretty large number, I mean, and I'm not for, for robbing somebody of something, but why are, if, if. If they're banking so much, figure, give it to.
It costs us the fishers. Oh, we have to do a budget and.
Bank.
Well.
Bank, if we have got, yeah.
So that, that, that just brought it to my, you know, when we were discussing, they just brought it back to the fore. Is this something?
We did that years ago, remember that we.
We paid out.
We paid out and then we.
We still have some that are still way above, yeah.
Yeah.
But why don't we, that's just like we've talked about the ordinance, why don't we enforce what our policy acts yourself? Why, why do we allow that? And how do you tell when somebody's on vacation or they're just. Not at work, how, how, who's keeping track of that?
I guess I'm, I'm asked about our apartment involved as a member, because even before we ever went with them, we had like a discussion on that thing. Right, we were not. Right, we were not.
Yeah, I remember, I mean, I just, it's just something that frustrates me, I mean, just.
Do they have a policy in place though, Ty?
Well, that was the thing we were discussing. I'm gonna just go ahead and throw out. You know, it wouldn't be like that. Pretty good following rule, pretty good following. If they have.
Is that something that could come back on the counties, let's say, Tony does retire down the road, a number of employees and. Hey, we're, we have a shortfall in our budget of X amount of dollars, all you members need to kick in?
I don't know that they have a shortfall at this juncture. But potentially, I mean, yeah, I suppose, I mean, if we're responsible for things, there's always potential for anything that we're, we're twenty eighty with.
That's at the time of half, they.
Well, that's the point that I brought up at the meeting, I said, you know. If he's got that many hours, some of them were brought into the system on a lot lower salary.
That's the problem.
That's the.
Well, I mean, that's basically giving yourself a pay raise way back five years, ten years ago, you see what I'm getting at?
That's one of ten, Tom.
How many kids in the year's time do we send over there?
Well, we haven't sent any for the last year and a half, I think, we'd have to look, ask, ask Nate for sure for that.
Cause I, I guess that's where I'm going.
Get some, I don't, like, no, the evaluations, you know, I don't, do we do evaluations of the evaluations, do they do them in?
I don't.
Yeah, I think Nate sends them over there.
Yeah, I don't believe to the extent that we don't have that ability.
I think Nate sends them, there's just little things, and then long-term ones for. Or unruly, and I don't, maybe you guys can handle it. I think that was what Nate always wanted to have it, I wouldn't say take it, take it out of our system unless he thought that we. Could live, you know, there wouldn't be any liability, you know, it wouldn't cause us any problems, I mean, yes, and it takes care of. Ninety-nine percent of it, huh? You know, and that's for the obvious reason, they're closer, so parents can go up to check their children.
And I'm like, there isn't any financial risk down the road to have them as. A tool in our toolbox, I get it, but if there is. Potentially financial risk, and yet we don't hardly use them.
I don't think there is unless we, states would screw up the funding streams. Which I'm more worried about the state screwing something up than I am Central Iowa or the S Center. You, you know what I mean, and when I say screw it up, I mean, jerk funding and all of a sudden, poof, we're all in the bag here. You know, that's, I'm more worried about something like that than I have either of the centers. I mean, this, the centers have their little difficulties, you know, they're dealing with difficult situations, that's part of the job, but. So I mean, there's always a lot of things going on, but nothing that hugely compromises the county membership. And I'm gonna tell you, we've got some really good people. Oh, shoot, she's a debbie. Uh, very sharp lady.
Supervisor? One haired one?
No, she's, no, I don't think she, I mean, she's got. But we've got some very good people on there, but, I mean, Bob though.
Each county had to chip in about twenty thousand up at the S.
Miners just told me at coffee after mass, yeah, they, his first meeting at the S Center, he had terminated. Director.
Misappropriated funds in each county had to chip in twenty thousand.
So there's those type of things.
They can't have.
So that be the, what you would consider the department head? The direct, I mean, in the language that goes into policy manuals, is the director considered the department head?
Yeah, yeah.
And is there any oversight, I mean, that, that's where the problem. Well, and so when Ty says that. Department heads are the ones that are to manage, you know, your vacation time and your cop time, is Tony considered the department head that should be managed?
He's the, he's the CEO of all things.
To the board.
Can set the policy.
Board control.
They're there once, uh.
Yeah, and then Todd Stecker, but you know. He's, he's our chair, he's doing a really good job, and it's, he's had a lot of trying issues in his time as chair too, I think he's done great. Latifah's on there. And she, she's, she's the detail. That's the thing, and she is, she's an old lawyer, she's a retired lawyer. And she doesn't miss much, I, I love listening to her. But uh, the uh. There's a good, there's a good, and I mean, I'm just touching tip of the iceberg, there, it's thirty seven counties or so. Yeah, it's a big comparison, a lot of good people on there, there's some new ones that are, you know, engaged as well, so. But uh. I don't know, it's just little things like that, I don't know, Dave, I, I really don't, I wouldn't wanna take it out of Nate's toolbox if. He thought he might need it for something. You know, I mean, they got, they do so much other stuff too, that basically draws in a ton of finance, you know what I mean, but. That, you know, their financial.
They're the being fiscal agents.
They do basically all over the state, they do analysis, you know, drug testing and yes.
No, they got the.
He's, he's, he's into everything. But, and so which basically gives room for, you know, you gotta have bookkeeping staff, well, this gives them more to do and keeps them occupied. And that was the idea, I'm sure, when they were building this thing up, was to make better use of their employees, justify pay, cause. That's the other thing they were, Kyle, are you guys having trouble getting staff?
Currently, no, but we have, have to get us.
See, they're back to having trouble, and their problem, I mean, is, and, and I don't think Eldor is as big as charity. Yeah, so they, I mean, they have to recruit from Waterloo, like from A, Fort Dug, I mean, they gotta try to get people way away. You know, to come in, especially when you're looking for specialized career types, you know? Uh, so they, they have Marshall time, just all kinds of different places they're trying to pull people. And it's a job that, uh, there is turnover because. These kids are in them centers for.
It's a tough situation to start.
You know, I know, I know that that new wind that we put on. Has really helped in managing the, the kids, and they still. I mean, do things just to be destructive. But uh. Yeah, well, they're just angry at them people. And I think the system is full right now, I mean, and it's full. And I think that's that adult wave that really made it, really boosted our numbers. Yes.
Do they work on those anger issues that was causing them while they're there?
Yeah, they try to, they've got counselors and, and therapists that come in. I mean, so they do try to work with that, you know, I, I can't speak for all the center, but I know we do, and I suspect the officers are bigger than. I, I guess they all probably have counselors and stuff.
Nate shared with us success stories where they get them the right counseling, the right medication, and they've gone on to college and. Become employed and, you know, really taken off, ran with it, that's the whole idea.
And that's just, yeah, I just wonder how much of like, I don't know, I mean, the adult wave sometimes will be there, and they'll say, well, them are actually the ones that are best behaved. But then the next time you turn around, that's the ones that are the worst behaved. So I mean, I don't know if that's the best idea to have them next in, you know, I mean, to people tell you about. Adult person, you know, it's usually just a networking center. You know, it doesn't really do much rehabilitation, it's where people go to network with the others, more professional criminals, you know? And so I, I hope that our juvenile detention centers are that way, and I think some. Networking happens there, but I, I would hope that we're trying to help these kids, cause gosh, that's, that's a long life ahead. In any event. And anybody can get over their stuff, it's just a matter of. Do you want to? You know, but. That's about all I had, I mean, I really, so much of that stuff, that's a thing, that, cause we have two closed session things.
You have an ankle coming up?
In July. June, last year I went to that international summit, Summit USA, and this year I'd really like to go, but. If we don't have our, a shovel-ready facilities or something, it's a waste, it's a waste of energy. I mean, we need to really look at those kind of things in the community, uh CDC is working, you know, Paul's getting his education, he needs to start. He's been going to conferences, locally stepped up. We, we gotta get some stuff ready, but you know, like this year with all the tariff stuff going on, and all the people wanting to cut the best of paradise. And like, gosh, maybe it'd be a good year to go, I don't know, but we don't have any place for him, where, where do you tell them to go? I have no sales pitch. You know, so I think that would be a waste, need to go this year, I'd like to keep working on stuff here. But uh. Be in June or July, early in July too. That's, and it's in Philadelphia, that'd be interesting. But I've been working on some stuff, I haven't heard back, oh. I actually was checking that a little bit ago, I was asking questions about the uh ten million dollar firm. You know, or is that something, what's Naco's stance, I mean, is there anybody else talking about it, basically? Um, some different stuff like that, and I did, I told you a couple people ago, probably gonna have somebody come in and speak in July. About, about security issues coming across the border, screwing with, so. But uh, that's all I got.
I was gonna ask a question when it was my turn, but I forgot, um, do we have any idea when the investigator is coming? Because uh I do have some plans coming up in the next couple of weeks, and I wanted to make sure that I had.
I am a bit sooner than later, but I.
Actually, going out for a minute.
Had to think about what you were talking about. Like, I am just doing Central.
Is that everything, Ty?
They definitely have anything else.
Well, let's take a five-minute break till Paul gets here, see if he has something else.
Break?
At the end, I was in the bucket. I said, Tom, I'm staying in this bucket if this thing collapses on me. Oh, yeah, I was in a hole fixed a water line and sand vein around there. It kept collapsing around me. Tensile.
Yeah, not a good place to be. Most people that get buried there don't survive.
But we got it.
Yeah, you know, it just pulls slips back. Do anything to get it so that that's stable. But anything deeper like your chest is bad dangerous.
What is the main coming in? How to get it?
Have any water from the livestock or anything?
Yeah, yeah.
Got that so fast. Yeah. That makes good, it gives little pictures. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well.
My hair stand up outside.
Good thing that you worked out okay. And so uh, I don't even, I'm not even gonna make copies of waste of paper today because I don't have a whole lot of new stuff to go over. Uh, you get that resolution to approve.
Yes.
Uh, for the fund transfer. That's probably the big item there. Uh, the bridge over bail, they're still working hundred goals, so that most of that's gone already, one hundred fifty five. So it's moving along very well. Uh, the seal code subgrade stabilization is scheduled here in another six weeks. And uh, the great crew there by uh. I've got twenty years and Kenny Grease, Kenny trees, yeah. Uh, just north of Tony's there on three thirtieth. Do a little snowball basically. It's on a gravel road. So something we don't do. Well, we kind of have those features ready, so that was a good one here in the area. Uh, and then the bridge crew there moving up to A Avenue, got a little twin colt there that's coming right up. And the roadside, they're finished up seeding here probably this week. Uh, did a really nice job of mowing. So. Went to Lakeview on Friday night, came back, we're driving, you know. Getting to Crawford County, getting roadside, some little big roots, paymarks are due, just thinking, wow. It's kinda nice.
Very nice.
They look very nice, yeah. Uh, and then uh, the spray truck, I mean, that's. Get it for the season. Uh, we're having a problem with the old one, that's why we're doing it. But they are gonna send us some loaner components. It's basically the, the controllers, you know, how it is now, it's just open a valve, spray goes out. Now it's gotta communicate this to that. We gotta track it with GPS, we have a record we did. Uh, that's communicating that now, so they're gonna send us a loaner control systems. So we can put in kind of a guy for this thing again.
Pattern.
We, the component and you know, that the, the actual physical pumps, nozzles and everything work. The electrical control systems that are. They're just outdated. They don't have any replacement parts in world. Anyhow, uh, we'll see if we can get them going and keep everybody spraying. I think the other thing is the gravel. Right, the ball started today, this morning, so uh. But it's not so, so much that the roads are sloppy, so actually a good, good day to start. Lots of trucks, so. Yeah, yeah. I just remember the days where we could only scrape by with, you know, five, six trucks. Now it's turned trucks away. So uh, so yeah, they'll work up there. Like I already did next week, they'll have, yeah, that uh, won't take long and then uh. They'll move up to the car to fit. Go to Lakeview, straight through eighty thousand ton there. So that is all I have today.
We couldn't have locked it up.
Pretty short, sweet.
Resolution.
We're gonna prove that resolution. Yeah, that just transfers all of the general fund monies. At the, the last half of the rural fund. To uh, from, from the general basic. To the second. Yeah, yeah.
Resolution approved, that resolution twenty, twenty-five dash twenty-two.
I'll second that. We have lots of second for the discussion. There's resolutions, we'll do roll call. Say hi if you're in favor, Kyle.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Gene.
Hi.
Hi.
Chairman, what's up, man?
I did want to add, there's a, a group of engineers, our association that are kind of advocating a separate levy. They're saying there. There used to be one. Uh, but there used to be levies for a lot of things back in the early eighties, the levies were on, fortunately, as I understand. Fat check me on this, but I was told that there were levies for each of the, you know, treasurer. Or there, there were separate levies for each department. And it became terrible confusing and it complicated. And so the legislature bashed down and just said, okay, we're gonna have two levies. Essentially to the general basic and the rural basic. Consolidate all those that's up to the works inside how they want us to bound these funds.
Where are we talking about?
Yeah, so uh, you know, so that there, there's a, you know, push, you might hear that, that, you know, that's why you have to do this. That's what, what we just did is because. The department has to have those funds deposited in there and in, in addition to consolidating and eliminating all these levies. Uh, they established the minimums, so you know, the, the, the most you could transfer and, and. A lot of other things followed that.
We gotta do that twenty-five, twenty-three as well.
We will, yeah.
So anyhow.
But that's a separate.
I just wanna let you know that if your discussion, there's some talk about going back to that. So that the public knows how much money, how much of their money is going to. Figure you're doing a good job.
Well, thanks, Paul.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Thanks, man.
See you soon.
Okay, move on to discuss and take action, resolution twenty-five dash twenty-three. Motion by Gene. Same by Ty, discussion. Transfer from general basic, Indy general supplemental. Roll call again.
They have a real basic. And real stuff.
Yep.
Question.
Kevin, Kyle, Craig.
Hi.
Gene.
Hi.
Hi. Chairman, sorry.
That's interesting that what Paul brought up, that we to, to eliminate confusion and to basically help manage the tax monies. And that's what these, like, chairs are actually for. But now we keep making all these new tax asking entities of their own. I think we need to really, it needs to be evaluated. Create the new ones and new ones.
Sort of looking at doing that with. Uh, emergency.
EMA.
Yeah, EMA, right?
Well, when you think about like the different tech.
Why, what is the point of that? Having your own tax ass entity instead of just coming to us and having us funded. I mean, there's no difference to the taxpayer.
Apparently they're, you know.
Taking the political side out.
Yeah.
That being my way, like EMA, taking the polit- politics out. They did with the assessor. And public health. Take politics out, so they're not burdened by politics.
Public health, though, we still have to approve them. But if they're their own taxing entity, that's kind of approved by the citizenry through a, a legal tally. And then they're their own, like, the assessors and hospital where they're on.
So the assessor was approved by, had to be statewide, cause it's.
I think they're telling their state representative.
Right.
But like, if EMA, now that's gonna, that, if that would be. Brought forward by the.
An optician. County by county?
If that, yeah, it has to be approved on our count, on a, on a ballot.
So if a county didn't approve it, they'd still fund it just through the, or a signature.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a separate taxing entity. I mean, it would work just like it is now.
Yeah.
But EMS is what, what, we're not talking about EMA, it's EMS, that's the one.
And the difference is?
Well, EMS is the emergency medical services. That's like the ambulance. Back the rescue.
Not including.
EMA is emergency management, it's a whole separate entity. There's, they both start with emergency management or.
That's why I wanted to publicly state the difference.
Yeah, EMS is uh, the ambulances and what happened.
Emergency medical.
Yeah.
Emergency management.
And the reason that some counties have passed, EMS has to be second services app. And it is protected by its own levy.
Gotcha.
Whereas you're bored to come and say, I don't know, we're already maxed out, we're gonna fund you at this level.
See, that's the thing is, you might have a board that's very supportive, but then you have, you say two boards from now wouldn't be supportive. And then your medical services could be compromised. And obviously nobody wants, when you need an ambulance, you don't wanna know of the, oh. Excuse me, how the board supervisor voted, you want, you want that ambulance falling in directly, right? So I mean, that, that, it's got its reasons for doing it. But uh. It's another unfunded, well, it would be a mandate. And it wouldn't be unfunded, but it'd be on property tax, so if we're trying to keep property taxes down, you know.
But it would have to be voted on by.
Yeah, by the population. You know, and so, I mean. Right now, them funds are kind of directed through the hospitals tax asking, but. You know, they've got a lot of things that they've got to focus on, so I mean, would it be better served to be its own entity? That's just something that's gotta be brought up in the discussions if they want something to do. What's this potential for?
Good?
Yeah, no, I'm good. If, unless you have a request, hopefully I got.
We move on to dogs at large discussion. Let's call him over for this.
This is a discussion, not take action. I don't think.
Then if you had any.
I think we just wanted to keep it on the agenda so we didn't uh, put it. Uh, Craig did call in with some updates. Did he give you any indication that uh?
Um, I'm just gonna bring up, decide email him if he responded to.
All right, let's just discuss that. He's working on it. There's nothing to take action on, and he's timing. Just when you needed it.
And that's just, I just sent him uh. Two ordinances of Des Moines County and I think it was Benton County. And he just says, thanks, Greg, I'll give him a look. So. There was, I mean, the, the Des Moines County. If you wanna say vicious dog ordinance, if you wanna call it that, was probably like seventeen pages long. Unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
I read through there and I just said, Colin, this is very lengthy. Uh, but I'm sure we can take one or two good parts out of there. And it, it, to me, they, they talk more about um. Them being criminal charges, so if you don't, if you get uh. Like he was fined by the county clerk that you, what was it, twelve hundred dollars that he needed to pay for restitution? But this guy, if he didn't pay, now that's a criminal charge that can be handled with jail time.
See, that's.
So that's, that's where I think the teeth needs to be, that if people aren't gonna obey, abide by the ruling. That you need to pay this, or you need to pay this guy restitution. And you don't pay him, okay, you can actually go to jail for.
Gotta be subdued then.
Is that, so, is that because it is set, I would think, I thought there was something in C code that. For other reasons, if you didn't pay back damages or something that.
Right.
Be criminalized.
This would be part of that. The thing that those vicious, the tall ordinances go into is a whole bunch of different animals that would be included in that. And it is, I mean, they're even named samples. I had a Google search to find out, cause I didn't even know. But I mean, that's. This has been an issue for other counties and they've addressed it through.
We're just discussing dogs at large.
We're working on it.
We're more of a crush now.
Craig got a couple examples, some other counties, Roger, that he said.
I just found some other county ordinances that I sent on the column. I was gonna look through them and I think I try to come up with something for Crawford County, cause we're, we don't need to be Des Moines County. But we are Crawford.
Okay, is that, is that a decision?
So it listed other animals?
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna do it. I think it's probably more abroad instead of just saying vicious. I mean, talk about if, if you had, you know, you had a snake as a pet. If you had a monkey as a pet. You had other animals that could be termed vicious, right, exotic type animals that could be termed vicious.
People think they gotta have a damn tiger.
Right.
That was mentioned. That's in the ordinance, yes.
So how do I say, they're transporting me? Do they have their own animal control?
They do, they do. Those, those counties have their own animal control officer.
Okay.
Or honestly, just be you.
Well, yeah, and bring up another cert, I mean.
And that's, oh, right, that column needs, we need to work out, we gotta learn this.
Place to put the dogs in our vehicles. You know, the trucks, sure, if we get a kennel and, and have a kennel that'll be available, that we could throw them in the back of the vehicle, but like. The Durandos, the Tahoe's and stuff. There's just no place for a dog. I mean, you know, farm dogs, I mean. Fleas, ticks.
Don't bite yet.
That in, that too, but.
No, that's a great point, Roger, cause the, the, at Des Moines County does have a animal control officer. That uh, they contacted. We don't, so we need to take that into consideration. How do we handle that?
Something we don't have. The twenty-eight agreement with Edison, they go. Joint forces that have.
Do they have an animal?
They don't, but.
Okay, right.
Could create something. No, the officers just go and respond to. So if, if we find, if somebody calls in and said, hey, there's a dog running loose, whatever. We'll have them bring the dog into the pound right now, if, if they're willing to, like, it's not aggressive and so forth. And we'll check it into the pound. But otherwise, you know, we don't, we don't have it transported.
A while back, I had an elderly couple call and said that they had a dog running loose and uh, husbands in a wheelchair and. They had called in and they were told that you need to bring the dog into town and they were like, we can't get this dog in our car and, you know. So that was kind of a disconnect between the real problem and the real solution. They were wanting you guys to come out and get the dog and that's not, we don't have any.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so there's just some things to address.
Craig, well, we're working on that. I, right, put it on again.
We're in progress.
Put it on again next week.
Wasn't gonna be overnight, but uh.
You think we'll be at a point to discuss and take action next week? Okay, put it, and if you do, just.
Dog catcher. Trainers.
A little psych on me behind nervous. Uh, we can do set time and date, location for public carrying budget, minute, twenty-four, twenty-five, or do that quick.
We'd have to do like June seventeenth, because then it could get published in next week's paper, June fourth and fifth.
At ten AM.
I will make that motion, June seventeenth, ten AM.
Right here.
Right here.
I have a motion in a second for the discussion. Hearing that, all favors say hi.
Uh.
Chairman, what's up, man? All right, Rogers.
All right, have you guys had a chance to review this contract for our city? So basically, it's just, uh, it's the same contract that's in place already.
So there is a written contract in place?
With us that you already, so this is just modifying it. Um, the modification is they are adding. Uh, another ten thousand to us, um, they're gonna require, decide Manella and plus we're gonna require four hours. Twenty hours a week. Uh, patrol time will help out with their city ordinances as well, so that's the main difference between this contract.
So I just noticed that this contract said perpetuity, so I'd assume it went on forever. And I just, I didn't know if the old one was in perpetuity also, but it changed with just the dollar amount.
Is there any time like that twenty hours? Can it be the middle of the night or is it during the day or do they specify when they want to?
So it's, it's, and of course, we're not gonna do the same time each day, because they want people to understand that. Pay sheriff's office in town from eight to nine thirty in the morning, so it varies from day. So it kind of throws them off a little bit.
So the kid to stay controlling all these, you know, this is our shame thing, but exactly the same time, so you didn't want to leave town. So are you guys, you guys negotiate that dollar amount or how do you?
Yeah, I went to one of their city council meetings, and we talked, I talked with the city council.
Is that about the same per hour then that with other communities?
I know, so they both said twenty hours.
In the same dollar?
Um, and all it's a little bit more, um. Because more people.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Um. Now, city, they're the one that shot this price, discernment with. You know, so.
I mean, that's, they're willing to pay, I mean, that's certainly an agree with that, I mean.
I think they just wanna get a lot of the, the city workers up off of their plate.
Okay.
The patrol time, they, you know, they want us in town for, which is fine, so.
I agree.
Does that twenty hours count that as needed time? Let's say there's a big murder and if you have to go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, that would count when you're twenty, so if you take five hours for that, then it would only be fifteen hours of.
It, it, you know, it's fluctuable, I mean, it's, you know, fluctuate a little bit, I mean, I don't really.
Twenty hours.
Everybody, I'm sure they'll smoke it out there.
You know, put it as time clock and the city limits and.
You read a, like, a register.
So, so when we kick out of our, and do our patrol time, we'll let cops enter though. So they can keep track of, and, and the cities would ever want to come back and say, hey, can you show us, you know, your hours that you had for. For the year, whether cops are, can just type in, you know, Manola time, plus the time, that's city time, be able to print that off. Yeah, that's what they're asking.
Yeah. I mean, with other things, we're doing weird, there's a previous, look, vicious dog within this, this, this town is. But if we don't do the court enforcement, say Charter Road, cause you gotta choose that option, right?
No, Charter, Charter Road, um, I, I think I'm watching maybe the seventeenth. Or to approve the Charter Rules contract.
So, my question is, if there's a vicious dog within the city limits, Charter Road. Who's responsible for that dog? Cause that question was posed to me this morning. It was gonna be the county, but they didn't have the city orders, right?
But so.
The board they had, which is within the city limits of the city of Charter.
So with, with Charter Road. They're not asking for a control of mine, they're just asking for assistance with them in their county ordinance, uh, not county, but the city ordinance. Um. The way I'm getting it is, I mean, they're still gonna partake in, in some of their ordinances, you know, involves under their city rules. Um, so if it's vicious, I mean, we'll file, we'll help them file the paperwork. Uh, we're, now city, Manella, um. Um, so if it's vicious, I mean, we'll file, we'll help them file the paperwork, uh, where Dell City, Manila, um. We're taking notice of the ordinances, we'll file everything for them, I take care of it that way. But plus we're, according to their contract, you know, their city ordinances weren't included at the time of their contract. And that contract hasn't been updated as of yet, um, I presented the same contract to Charter Road. They came back with a a different offer and to take out certain things of their contract.
I think that does bring a question, is vicious dog inside city limits and we'll just use Charter Road. Got a dog that's, you know, roaming around and attacking, chasing little kids around, you guys go. They don't have an ordinance in the city limit, I can see unincorporated cities. But if they don't have one and they're incorporated.
Well, I think, I think most of their, most of the small towns in Crawford have their constituents that they're taking too. But when obviously work Manila, I would call around and get their, and and a lot of it, you know, the dog issue.
The dog.
Has been brought up with different health as well, so I think it's all covered up. With with the current ordinances, to be a dog vicious, she haven't had two bites within the twenty four month period.
Really?
Kind of going through that right now.
It's a good time to kind of maybe ramp up everything we know about dogs on the loose too, it doesn't necessarily have to be, in my opinion, have to hit somebody twice.
As as a count, our county ordinance would not include any incorporated areas. And you can't put that in your county ordinance that would include incorporated areas. That do not have an ordinance, so can, you can't say.
But they don't at this time, as far as you know.
I think they all do.
They do.
They all have the issues handled.
It's a question that's tall, I guess.
But behind the eight ball then, if the, you know, it's less we get, uh, Charter have it in.
So I think everybody worked on that, ordinance is back. With the pit bull incident.
Oh, pit bull, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's when, or all these, and I think Colin's right about that, about being specific about breed, I don't think you wanna do that.
No, you do not.
What I'm saying that's the. You can't, you can't limit what animals they can have, I mean, as far as dogs.
No.
I mean, you can, you can live just a lot of chickens.
You can be more aware of certain breeds.
Yeah, but you can't limit breeds as far as what you have in town.
A rat carrier. Yeah, and I've seen some best behaved dogs, they're not pit bull.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the agreement with Dell City.
I'm over we approve the law enforcement agreement with Dell City.
I'll second that.
I'll second any further discussion. Hearing that all, favor Sam.
Senator Roger Warren here, uh, went to, okay, Boji, on Sunday morning, north of Kyron. How how did that semi, did he fall asleep or? Okay, he was off the road, ran over. And it was on that straight path just north of Kyron, maybe a half a mile where it's really straight, you're like.
No, it was on Sunday?
Sunday, it was Sunday morning, I saw the sheriff's department's there and I'm like, I bet you'd wish they put half, half a mile further than the second. Saw, I'm like, I wonder how if he fell asleep and got distracted. He crossed, you know, the one, crossed, I guess, the west side, so if there had been somebody coming, it would have been disastrous. But, uh, yeah.
Okay.
The unused half of a dollar cigar took a puff, said, mine is pretty good. Sure, that cigar ended up rolling. That's a good song.
We'll move on to citizen input, would he approve, anybody on Zoom?
No hands up.
We'll move on to our history lesson.
History lesson for the day, so I've got an hour and forty five minutes. I should be able to get it done, it did, having a little bit more time does let me, give me, uh, the ability to include a couple of, uh. Articles in the paper, which I think are are pretty cool, but, uh. Why did the board of supervisors go from three to five? And to me, the story starts, uh, in nineteen fifty two. Uh, the current members of the board of supervisors, names to remember, uh, James Fleming. AW and back in the fifties, it seems like a lot of people just use their initials instead of a first name, but it's AW Stageman and Chris Olson. And these were just, Crawford County at that time was divided up into three districts, and so they weren't at large, they were voted on by the district. And, um, Stageman or Chris Olson was from Manila, uh, Stageman was from the Sleswing area. And so I think Fleming was Dow City Vale type of areas. Or not, not Dow City, Deloitte Vale areas where he was from. So that was the district, what, what, what happened, what's in nineteen fifty two, there started, uh, they for, they formed, not they. But in Crawford County, it was formed, the Crawford County Taxpayers League was formed in nineteen fifty two. And they were a group of people that was upset with the rising property taxes. Uh, surprise, surprise, not much changed seventy years later, but. They formed the Crawford County Taxpayers League and their goal was to have a member from every township, from every city, from every town. Um, they were a dues paying membership, you pay ten dollars a year to be a member. And within two years, they had four hundred members.
Well, their taxes must have really made them.
But, uh, they were upset that there was no place for them to to go. And the taxpayer league said that, well, we're gonna do is we're gonna put a person at every monthly meeting of the school board, city. And county, we're gonna have a member there and we will have more people show up for every, uh, budget hearing. And in fact, in nineteen fifty six, I believe they had a budget hearing last, in this courthouse lasted for three days. Oh, wait, God. So they had over, uh, two hundred people show up for a budget here in this little room. But, uh, so that that's the formation of of the Crawford County Taxpayers League to get the citizens of Crawford County must have felt at that time. We don't have no place to go, nobody's listening to us. And also, it was formed before then, but they had a thing that was called the Bouyard River Drainage District. And those drainage di- districts by, um. The Iowa Supreme Court stated that, hey, if the county board of supervisors levies, let's say ninety thousand dollars to fix this drainage district. And ends up costing a hundred and fifty thousand, that's sixty thousand, we can, uh, put on the taxpayers that. Are joining landowners of that drainage district, that the Supreme Court said, yes, board supervisors, you can do that, you can. Levy the tax against those landowners to fix this problem in this drainage district. And so these drainage, these Bouyard, um, River Drainage District people got bills. Got levies on their property from like nineteen forty six, nineteen forty seven, nineteen forty nine, nineteen fifty one. And they all came in one year and they were upset about it. And they're like, where are we gonna go? We're gonna go to the trustees of the Bouyard River Drainage District. And the trustees of the Bouyard River Drainage District were the county board of supervisors. The three guys that were on the county board of supervisors were also the trustees of the Bouyard River Drainage District. And so those guys felt like we don't have any place to go, so they went to the Crawford County Taxpayers League and said, hey, can you guys help us with that? This is, look at this problem we got, we've been taxed and we feel it's unjustified, can you do anything? And the Crawford County Taxpayers League at the time said, you know what, there's some issue going on with the county board of supervisors. Between what they thought was the maintenance fund and the road fund, they had different funds back then. But that there's, seems like there's some money that goes between them that we can't really figure it out, so. The Crawford County Taxpayers League hired an ex FBI agent to come in and ask some questions to some people. To look at the books and in, um. Let's, um. They took those findings that this FBI agent found and they went to the attorney general of the state of Iowa. Whose name, uh, by the name of Alexander, I think it was Ho, uh. He was the attorney general, they took that to him in early nineteen fifty four, so about a year and a half, they went through this investigation. Took their findings to the attorney general and just by the way, in nineteen fifty two, also the grand jury. And at that time, it seems like the grand jury met more frequently than what they meet now. But they actually recommended that the county board supervisors move from three people to five. It never said why they recommended, I couldn't find that why in the paper, I could find in the minutes of the Crawford County Board of Supervisors. Brought up twice in nineteen fifty two with the board of supervisors and the last time it just says that it was, um. Last entry was, it is justly noted and filed, so.
Do you think that?
They brought it up, board of supervisors, they didn't feel it was that important, so it just says, hey, it's noted, they understand and it was filed.
Was it for more representation?
I think it was because from what I can understand, it seemed like the board of supervisors recognized from their county attorney. That there were some things that should have been bid on that maybe weren't. And they're like, yeah, we probably should have bid on that, but we didn't, it wasn't that big a deal, it's not that big of a dollar mind. I don't think there were that much restrictions in the law and Iowa code, like there is now, what we have to bid on. Don't have to bid on it, so, um. And just so you know, Chris Olson was the longest standing board member in the history of the Crawford County Board of Supervisors. He had served eighteen years at that time, uh, the county board started in eighteen fifty eight, so it's almost a hundred years old, he had served the longest. And in in February of nineteen fifty four, he announced that he was gonna run for reelection. And then, uh, it was in the paper, March nineteenth, uh, Chris Olson said that he's not going to run. Because of health concerns, that his doctor advised him against running. And four days later, in March twenty third of nineteen fifty four, Chris Olson resigned. April, April fifth and sixth, the, uh. As the attorney general sent one of his assistants by the name of Earl Smith. To Dennison to meet with the Crawford County Taxpayers League and go over what they had and this Earl Smith. Had a dis- with the Crawford County Taxpayers League and the Taxpayers League, um, went to the. Contacted the attorney general and said, hey, this guy's no good, the attorney general said, it never came out what he did. But the attorney general forced him to resign from his post with the state attorney general's office. He then sent the assistant attorney general by the name of Merrick, uh, to Dennis in Iowa. To meet with the grand jury and go over, and along with that, he also sent, um. Let me just make sure I get this right now. He sent two people from the criminal investigation of the division of I- of Iowa Public Safety. And three people from the Iowa State Income Tax Criminal Division with him to Crawford County to meet with the grand jury. Officially, on March thirty first nineteen fifty four, the grand jury probe opened, um, the district judge appointed. Uh, at that time, RB Frank, I'm assuming it was Rick Frank Spawder, Ray Frank, I think was his name. As the assistant county, uh, attorney, and he was the Crawford County Taxpayers League president at that time. Because in nineteen fifty two, this is kind of an offshoot, but in the nineteen fifty two county attorney election, Mr. Brandon. Uh, B. Brandon, or R. Brandon, I think it was Robert Brandon, ran against Frank and the vote ended in a tie. So who says your vote doesn't matter, mattered in nineteen fifty two for county attorney, ended in a tie. So Chris Olson, who was chairman of the board of supervisors at that time, put each name in a hat, pulled out one name, that was Mr. Brandon. Brandon was the county attorney and Ray Frank, I think at that time, decided that, hey, there's something else I can do in the county. And so that's be the president of this Crawford County Taxpayers League, then worked with Brandon on this, uh, grand jury probe. Um, officially, yeah, it opened and then allegations started coming out in the newspaper. Uh, the newspaper, uh, one of their first pa- first issues was about, oh. The county buying weed spray for its weed commissioner, you know, about there and spraying the weeds, they had the problem, of course, back in the fifties. But they were buying all of their weed spray from a company out of Fort Dodge. And they, the paper listed all of the prices and the quantities that were purchased. And then they went to the local dealers and said, hey, what could you sell this to the guys? And they said, hey, we'd sell it to you for this, well, it was less than what they were buying at the, from the Fort Dodge company. So it got to be, why are they buying stuff from Fort Dodge? When it's more expensive than just buying it from Dennison, what's going on, are they on the tape? Is somebody getting something back? Why, why didn't they bid for that? How come it wasn't out on a public bid? And so there started to be some suspicions there. And then there got to be this issue with the drainage district about these jackstones. I don't know if you guys are familiar with what a jackstone is, but, uh. There was, they, these were concrete structures that had three legs to them and they were kind of. Bolted together in the middle and they would put these in the Bouyard River to prevent it from eroding the banks. And so back in the day, these were pretty popular. And Crawford, the Bouyard Valley Drainage District and Crawford County purchased a lot of these, and I mean a lot of these. And initially in forty seven, forty eight, forty nine, they bought them from a company out of Nebraska. And what happened was, was that there were two salesmen for this company in Nebraska. And the salesmen were, um. The company would build Crawford County, but Crawford County wouldn't get the invoice, they would get the invoice from these two salesmen. So the two salesmen were buying them directly from the company that they worked for, then rebilling Crawford County. And the markup was substantial, markup was substantial. As a matter of fact, and I can just show you the, a headline of a paper back in the day. But this is the headline of Dennison Bulletin, it just says, fabulous jackstone story is told. And it talks about.
What's the day of the top that?
This was June eighteenth nineteen fifty four. And this talks about. Um, jackstones, it just says there, the three legged concrete gadgets that look like a child's toy has been common word in Crawford County for many months. And rightly so, the bulletin today gives facts and figures showing that the taxpayers in the Bouyard Drainage Districts one, two, and three. Have paid exorbitant prices for these jackstones used to, quote unquote, control river currents. And it states in here that, um. It was called the Capital Bridge Company that they purchased them for, but, uh. The trustees of the Dennison District paid forty six thousand five hundred and seventy nine dollars to two salesmen. Represented the Capital Bridge Company of Lincoln, Nebraska, who paid only nineteen thousand six hundred and six dollars. For those exact same jackstones. And so. That was a lot of money back then, and there was even some debate about, do they even work? Uh, an engineer who knows enough about the subject to be hired by the United States Navy on water erosion program have said. Jackstones are no good on a straight channel like the Bouyard River. And James Fleming Fleming, like I said, was the county supervisor at the time, said, I'm not sold on the use of jackstones. I think we might be able to do as much good with tree trunks and branches where the river bends. So, uh. Just to go. There, there started to be also pictures in the paper of jackstones that were piled up throughout the county. It's that AW Stageman's. It's that A. W. Stegeman's district, they found eighty jackstones piled up. Uh, in one person's property. There was, uh. Stegeman said that at the Sleswick County Farm or County, yeah, County Farm or not County Farm. But the county shed that there were over a hundred jackstones just there at the county shed that were purchased, but not in the river. And they started showing up in Chris Olson's territory. They started having pictures of these jackstones in the paper. That, hey, what's, what's the deal? These things are piled up. One guy found them in a, just a random prick. Then he called the Dennison newspapers. They came up and took pictures of these random prick and a pile of jackstones piled up out there. That they said that they purchased them from this company in forty-seven, forty-eight and forty-nine. And, um. So it must be noted that, uh, Ward and Miller, those are the two salesmen. Paid from six dollars and twenty-five cents to eight dollars and fifty cents for jackstones. When the county issued warrants, so to cover the cost, the jackstones jumped in price from thirteen fifty to as high as eighteen fifty each. And so you can see that there was something. Something going on. And then it got to be, also the newspaper came out with, hey, we, we have a county employee. By the name of Leonard Hassett from Manila. And he's really good friends with Chris Olson. Leonard Hassett was the head of the Dennison, uh, county shed. And Mister Hassett owns a bulldozer. That the county rents from him on a per hour basis. And I don't think it's proper that the county should be renting a machine from a county employee. In fact, there's even a state law that said you can't do that. And so why aren't we doing that? And the response, or not the response was, but apparently it was for snow removal. And so the Dennison newspaper, along with the Crawford County Taxpayer League, got some information. And showed that, hey, in February, I think it was in nineteen forty-eight, there was a total of point eight-five inches of snow. Three different occasions for the month. And yet Mister Hassett charged the county for like thirteen days of using his snow plow. For point eight-five inches of snow. He charged him out at nine dollars and fifty cents an hour back then, which is pretty high. And they went through three different counties or three different months of February. January and December and said, hey, look at all this. Uh, time that he charged, here's the amount of snow we got. Is it really justified? And then they ended the article by saying that, um. What at the time that, uh, we, that they did that, um. Yeah, uh, in January nineteen forty-nine, when the county board approved rental payments of one thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars to Hassett for his bulldozer. And plow, the county had on hand, this machinery. Twelve crawler type tractors. Eighteen motor graders, five four-wheel drive trucks with snow plows attached. Ten one and a half and two-ton trucks with snow plows attached, seventeen snow plows for motor graders. Three extra snow plows for the one and a half to two-ton trucks. Therefore, the county had thirty-two snow removal units that could be put into service within a few minutes. There were sixteen hundred, at that time, ten miles of trump and secondary roads in the county. About fifty miles per plow, per snow plow unit. If all roads were drifted shut at the same time and they worked at so many miles an hour. How long would it take them to get done? Is this really justified? So this was all coming out in the paper, I think, and building a lot of resentment towards the county. Board of Supervisors and the county kind of in, in general. And so.
Who was on their doze?
They did not have one at the time. But the, the grand jury, uh, this guy interesting interviewed, I think up to sixty people. Probably twenty to twenty-five county employees. They interviewed bankers, they interviewed. Landowners, adjoining landowners. And how you knew who they were being interviewed is because it was in the paper. At the end of every week, the paper would say, here's who the grand jury interviewed this week. And it's like, how in the world did the paper know? Who the grand jury is interviewing? And that's because back in the day. When you served, if you had to testify or were a witness to a grand jury, you got a per diem and you got mileage. And so when they served, they went up to the top clerk, went to the clerk of court. Did their service, came down here to the treasurer's office, said, here's my mileage, here's my per diem. And the county treasurer would write him out a check. County treasurer kept track of who they were getting the check to. They were supplying that information to the newspaper as to who was coming in. And so you knew everybody that was coming in, which I found was absolutely surprising. The Crawford County Treasurer at the time was Roy Muller. And then on July second, nineteen fifty-four. The grand jury announced indictments on three people on thirteen charges. One of those charges, Leonard Hassett, he was charged with conspiracy to defraud the people of Crawford County. Had five counts of state income tax evasion. Uh, Chris Olson, uh, the Crawford County Board of Supervisors was charged with one count of conspiracy. To defraud the people of Crawford County and five counts of state income tax evasion. Then they had one unnamed individual from the state of Nebraska. They. The, the, the grand jury made also some recommendations. They recommended the immediate ouster. And that this was the term they used was ouster. The immediate ouster of the Crawford County engineer, whose name was William Wormoff. They, uh, recommended the ouster of Leonard Hassett as the Dennison County Shed foreman. They recommended the ouster of A. W. Stegeman, Crawford County Supervisor. They recommended the ouster of Rudolph Bleese, who was the manager of the county home. And they recommended that Board of Supervisor Chairman James Fleming resign. Those are the recommendations by the grand jury.
So Chris Olson didn't get. Oustered. Said he didn't get.
He got indicted.
Right.
He had already retired.
Right. That's right.
Which because of all these recommendations by the grand jury in, uh, July second. By July twenty-second, petitions started being circulated, calling for a November second special election. To change Board of Supervisors from three to five members. The Crawford County Farm Bureau released a statement that Crawford County should move to a five-person board. And also the grand jury then recommends a five-person Board of Supervisors put on the ballot, November second, nineteen fifty-four.
Uh, because it'd be harder for a five-person board to be corrupted.
Exactly. So. Because the grand jury recommendations, the state of Iowa filed tax liens on property of Leonard Hassett and Chris Olson. The third man that was indicted, uh, in Nebraska refused his extradition to Iowa. And it was the person by the name of Miller, who was a salesman for that company. He was indicted. And he refused his extradition. And, um. The district court, uh, met in August of nineteen fifty-four. To look at the recommendations by the grand jury, when the grand jury recommended the ouster of, uh, Leonard Hassett, they did fire him. And then when it went to the district court, the district court said, uh, you know what? The only people you can house are people that are elected or appointed, not that are just hired. And so Leonard Hassett is just a hired employee. He's, you can't oust him. So he gets to go back to work for the county and he gets back paid for the time that he was going. And a, a month later, when they hear it for them ousting the Crawford County engineer. The reason they ousted him is because he got charged with the O. M. V. I. back in the time, it was open operating motor vehicle intoxication. And, um. And because he was, uh, on a le- he was an appointed official. He was either elected or appointed. So they said, yeah, we can oust him. But the attorney for the engineer said, yeah, but he got his ticket on a weekend. He wasn't working. He was just out having, having fun. He wasn't on the county time at the time. And the judge says, you know what? You're right. He is his job back and he gets back paid for the time that he was ousted until now. Very interesting. In, in November of fifty-four, a vote on the five-member board was three thousand, one hundred and seven, yes. One thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine, no. And the, uh. The, uh. State election for governor, the Attorney General Ho ran for governor. Nineteen fifty-four and he was elected. So he is now the governor. He's now the Attorney General. And back then they were just two-year terms. So he was just a governor for two years in the state of Iowa. But, um, when he became governor in fifty-four, he prepared extradition papers on R. E. Miller in Nebraska. And the Nebraska Governor Anderson, on the advice of his Attorney General. Rejects the extradition papers. And so he was not extradited back to Iowa. And then eight months later, the governor of Nebraska rethought his decision and said, you know what? I rethink that and I will sign the extradition papers. The attorneys for Miller fought that extradition all the way to the Nebraska Supreme Court. And finally, the Nebraska Supreme Court.
And elected money.
And I think nineteen fifty-six, and it went two years before they allowed. They finally said to Crawford County that, hey, county sheriff, you've got ten days to come over to Nebraska and you can pick him up and bring him back for trial. That, uh. So amazing stuff that, that went on. Uh, in August of nineteen fifty-five, district court ruled that all indictments as presented by the grand jury will stand. And then, um. In nineteen fifty-six is still going on, judge throws out two income tax charges on both Hassett and Olson. And he throws out the conspiracy charge to defraud the people of Crawford County on Hassett. So Hassett never did, uh, go to trial. Uh, Hassett and, oh, excuse me, in, uh, that's not accurate. June of nineteen fifty-six, Hassett and Olson plead innocent. In June of nineteen fifty-six, also the Buoy River Drainage District serves notice. That they want the Board of Supervisors to bring court action against Olson and Hassett for the money that they got. And the board refused to do so. Hassett and Olson both seek a change of venue. Uh, in July of nineteen fifty-six, that was granted by the judge. So Hassett's trial is in Carroll County, Olson's trial is in Green County. Or I'm sorry, Hassett is in Sat County and, uh, Olson's is in Green County. Uh, judge in September of nineteen fifty-six, judge dismisses the tax charge on Leonard Hassett. For insufficient evidence from the state of Iowa. Uh, and in September eighteenth of nineteen fifty-six. Chris Olson was found guilty of conspiracy to defraud the people of Crawford County. He was not guilty on all the income tax evasion. The state appealed to, to the court on the tax evasion charges against Chris Olson. Those were denied in nineteen fifty-seven. And, uh, it's. November twentieth of nineteen fifty-six, Chris Olson was sentenced to thirty-six months for Madison Prison. And, um, like I said, that Arlo, the Miller charge, he was still fighting all this till, uh. Let's see, the Nebraska Supreme Court rules that he must be extradited in ten days and that wasn't till nineteen fifty-seven. And also in nineteen fifty-seven, Olson appeared, appealed his charge to the Iowa Supreme Court. Um, and in, no, in. January nineteen fifty-seven, the Iowa Supreme Court moves that his conviction stands. All the way in December nineteen fifty-seven, Olson asked for rehearing with the Iowa Supreme Court. The rehearing was denied in January of nineteen fifty-eight. And also in January of nineteen fifty-eight, uh, Olson was granted to stay until February fifteenth, so he could sell his farm. And, uh, in Ja- February of nineteen fifty-eight, um, Chris Olson started serving his time. Uh, in prison. In March of nineteen fifty-nine, Arlo Miller was acquitted by Idaho County jury. So they brought him from Nebraska, they moved his trial to Idaho County. He was acquitted of all charges. And a lot of times the argument was back in, as time went on, so much time went on that they say, hey, a lot of this stuff happened. Miller worked for this company back in forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, statute of limitations is here. And I, I remember reading an article in the paper where the judge says, yeah, I can't remember what I cooked for supper last night, let alone how I charged people back in nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine. And the argument for Olson and Hassett was just that, hey, yeah, we're friends. And, um. We do some stuff maybe on the side when it comes to gambling. And we, you know, we want to buy stuff. We don't want our wives to know. So. Sometimes if Hassett lost money gambling, he might come to Chris Olson, I'll give him some cash and he'll pay me back. And that's why we have all this money that's changing hands, because a banker actually testified that Leonard Hassett put money into Chris Olson's wife's account. At Shelby County Bank in Manila. And why are you putting money in there? Well, I'm just paying back a debt. That, uh, you know, this is not a, didn't, but guys do it all the time. As far as this money exchanging hands and they ask them to have any documentation of that. Chris Olson says, no, we don't have documentation, because it was paid back. We only keep trips until it's paid back. Once it's paid back, we don't need any payment. So, um. And part of the argument was that, hey, Ray Frank is on a Hassett job after Chris Olson, because Chris Olson drew out Brandon's name. He didn't draw out Frank's name. So Frank is that after Olson, ever since that very day, that he didn't pull out his name. And so Ray Frank has said, they had rumored that he had said that I'd do whatever I can to get that Chris Olson, whatever I got to do, I'm gonna get him. And so, um. Olson served eight months of his three-year sentence and then he went on parole. And that was in October of nineteen fifty-eight. And to me, to top it all off, on June thirteenth of nineteen sixty-three, Governor Harold Hughes pardoned Chris Olson. So never, never, still, uh. His, I guess, record, once you're pardoned by the governor, something I should wonder. And it was just a small, small article paper. About him being pardoned. I mean, it was, that's all it said, Chris Olson's pardoned by the governor. And, I mean, the reason I was looking for it, because I was just wondering when Chris Olson passed away. What his obituary might have said about it, but he passed away in, in Arkansas in nineteen seventy, uh, seven.
So that was a resignation for health reasons. Sure lasted a while.
Right. I want his doctor.
After they had the special election to go to five-person board.
Right.
And she had Olson resign. Did the other two.
They both ran and both got elected.
So did they have to wait then the following election term or was it all?
It was, it was, yes, that's exactly what happened. So didn't they? They, they, they elected, uh, a five, they, they moved, moved to a five-person board. And then the following year, following year, they had an election, first a primary. And, uh, they had fourteen people running the primaries for those five positions. And, uh, they wanted it to be, and I actually have it in my notes, but they wanted it to be. Initially, they wanted to have five districts in Crawford County. But instead they just kept the three districts and had two at large. Eventually it came to all at large at a moment that happened. But, uh, some, some, I've had anything, uh, some weird things if you want to say, or. To me, astonishing things that happened during this whole time period was Crawford County celebrated its centennial in nineteen fifty-five. And in the centennial, they had a parade in downtown Dennison. They said there was estimated crowd between twenty and twenty-five thousand people that showed up for the parade. Because also on that day, Dwight D. Eisenhower was running for reelection in nineteen fifty-six. And his train stopped down at the train depot that very day and he spoke for fifteen minutes. And, uh, which I'm sure is why more people were, were here. That, um. Right in, uh, September or November of nineteen fifty-eight, they voted to serve at large. Uh, oh, voted to serve at large, present three districts, two at large. So I guess they did that in fifty-eight. They're all at large. And, and a petition to make five districts failed to get enough signatures. And then the owner of that Capital Bridge Company, uh, his, his name, uh, was Ward and he came over. Twice to testify to the grand jury about his company and the fact that, hey, yeah, I had invoices. To Crawford County, but I never was paid by Crawford County. I always paid by my salesman. Why you can think that was weird. But anyway, just a thing to note that, uh, him. His name is Lauer Ward. And, uh, him himself and his wife were victims of Charles Starkweather. Oh shit, he, uh, the Nebraska.
Oh my gosh.
Mass murders. That he killed him and his wife in Lincoln, Nebraska. Mass murders, that he killed him and his wife in Lincoln, Nebraska, there's part of that. What Starkweather killed, what left people in the hundreds, something like that in Nebraska. But him and his wife were two of the victims of of Starkweather. And uh so just a couple of weird things that happened. And also that the day after the grand jury made this decision, back in the day, there was the Dennison Bulletin. And the Dennison Review, two different newspapers, not the same one, one came out every Tuesday, one came out every Friday. Well, the day after the grand jury, the two editors were flying in an airplane that crashed in the Dennison Airport and they were both killed. And one of the editors was a pilot, owned his own plane, they were coming back from Kansas City. And they were killed the day after the grand jury came out with this decisions. And uh that started the, if you wanna say, Richard Knowles's name became more prominent. Cause he was just a salesman and then he became the business manager after these two guys passed away. He actually, because the the newspaper, the, one of the editors was the secretary for the Crawford County Taxpayers. So that was the argument that some of the attorneys for Hasset and Olson used that, hey, that's just a Hasset job by the Dennison newspapers. And as a matter of fact, one of the editors was the secretary of the Crawford County Taxpayers. And so that was able to use the newspaper to, you know, besmirch and go after these people. And so uh that is the story of why Crawford County went to a five member board. So that probably took me, I'm guessing about twenty five to thirty hours of research.
Oh my gosh, and you knew.
To find all that out, and I guess I did use about thirty minutes. But uh it's quite a story, I mean, it's fascinating, I mean, and if you wanna say, well, here's here's a side note, tell you how fascinating the story is. Is that on the day that the grand jury gave its um. Ri- results, so the, you know, the grand jury came out and said, hey, we're indicting these three people. Is Leonard Hasset was um, they all had a bond, they had to be on bond. Well, Hasset's was set a thousand dollars, Hasset didn't show up to the grand jury, he didn't go, he had his own attorney. And attorneys back at the time, I mean, it was Gilchrist, if you know, the the names, Brandon, uh. Frank Floyd Page was was an attorney here in town, we had Floyd Page relays when I was a kid. And that's why he was a prominent attorney, Nash was an attorney in Dennison. And uh Gilchrist was the attorney for Hasset. Well, there were reporters and photographers here from Des Moines for that grand jury. And the photographer, he wanted to get a picture of Gilchrist, the attorney for Hasset, paying the clerk of court. So he'd followed Gilchrist up to the clerk of court's office, wanted to take a picture. Gilchrist said, what are you doing? He said, well, I'm here to take a picture, and he said, well, you're disturbing the peace and you're. Uh I forget what the term he used, but you you were interfering in his space. And so he went down and grabbed the county sheriff, who I think was in that office at the time, brought him upstairs, said, hey, this guy's disturbing the peace. And the sheriff said, I agree with you, and he arrested, he arrested the photographer. And threw him in jail, photographer had postponed to get out, thirty days later, they had a trial. Here at Crawford County, all whether that photographer could take a picture, or was he disturbing the peace? And uh the attorney for the photographer said, you know what, I don't want the judge to decide, I want a jury, I want a jury trial. And so they got the uh the Dennison P D, uh the the chief of police for the Dennison, for the city of Dennison. They had him walk up and down the streets to find nineteen people that could serve on a jury that day. Brought him before the two attorneys, they picked nine people to serve on the jury, it took them two hours to pick the nine people. Took another two hours to have the trial, and in four minutes, the jury came back and said, you're not guilty. So they said, yeah, it's okay, you can take a picture of it there, in the, in the Crawford County courts, it's okay. And uh but that, just one side note, what was going on and how publicized, it was more publicized. That I guess I thought that story would have carried on through the generations. But when people, you know, pass away and it's not, you know, I thought, cause I asked my dad, my dad's ninety, gonna be ninety one, so in fifty two, he'd have been eighteen. He didn't go to high school here, I said, did Grandma and Grandpa ever write you any letters and say, hey, here's what's going on in Crawford County? At the time, my great uncle, Earl Christensen, was serving as Crawford County Auditor. And he was called before the grand jury, but I never remember as a kid anybody ever talking about about this. Um so just interesting, interesting stuff and it, I mean, just very interesting.
Something you need to write an autobiography.
It's uh, I I like I said, I give credit to the Neru- Neru's libraries, they have all of that stuff you can search online. And the quality you can see isn't that great, you really gotta blow it up to kinda read it. But luckily, of course, since it was, I only had to search the front page, I didn't have to go through the whole paper, cause I'm like, it's gonna be on the front page. If it's on the front page, there's nothing going on to speak about it. So uh just really interesting stuff that I never knew happened, but you could see if that would happen. Today with the three member board, cause there are still three member boards in the county, in the state. That I think served very, very well, but I think that's what the citizens of Crawford County said, hey, we got. Grand jury indicted one supervisor, recommended the ouster of the other, recommended the resignation of the other, that there's something going on there that they all do. And uh.
And yet the two got elected back.
And the two got elected back, two got elected back. How they put that all together, that does kinda contribute parts of Scoop's story that he always used to say. There's members of people from Nebraska, Maggots, and such, but that's, you mentioned that Nebraska, you know, okay, so.
That is uh.
Interesting.
Thank you for.
That is the story.
I wouldn't like to say I remember any of that, but I was actually three days old when it all started.
That's what I mean, I was gonna talk, I was gonna ask, uh, like Jake Jake Aaron holds at our church, I mean, he's ninety two, so he'd been. But you know, back when you're in your late teens, early twenties, you're not paying attention to what's going on in local politics, I'm sure you'd say, oh, yeah, I remember something about that. But you know, you're busy, you're on the farm, maybe you didn't even get a paper, you know.
Fifty two, fifty two, fifty four, all that else is going on, three conflicts, a lot of these.
I mean, the big thing, they weren't listening to paper, everybody that got sent away, draft, who got drafted, where they were going. I mean, another big headline was that the rotary phone was coming in. That they were getting away from party lines, and everybody, you're gonna get your own lives, they had to get a rotary phone, that was a big thing. Interesting stuff, I I did not know that when I said, hey, when Amy and I, when he made me clean out that. That file cabinet, and I found these brochures, if you wanna call them, from the thirties to the seventies. That they gave out to the public, that listed what the county budget was, who all the elected officials were, they had pictures of the elected officials. Then Amy says like, looky here, Greg, in the thirties and forties, there were only three supervisors, and then in the fifties.
Is there a picture of both?
A picture of Chris Olson, I can.
That four supervisors possibly sitting on the same table.
Amy's got, yeah, Amy's got that. But why it changed, and I just told her, I said, I'll find out, and then Cindy Rudolph actually texted me one time, said, I'll be interested to find out by that. I'm like, yeah, we'll be interested, I had no idea I was gonna spend that much time trying to figure it out, and then as you get into the story, you're like, well, I. I told my wife one time, I said, I I I know why it happened, but I'm not to the end yet, I was just to where they were where Chris Olson. At one point where he was sentenced to prison, and I never got to the point where he was parole after eight months. And then, you know, the governor, or the state of Iowa, promoted him. And I'm like, I'm glad I went to the end of the story.
I I think it's interesting how many spin offs, like the two editors dying, and then, you know, the owner of the company getting.
At least you wonder with all that shady stuff going on, how that happened, I wonder what got putting the gas tank in that.
I thought the same.
Don't know.
That's why the paper was out that Dennison Bulletin and.
As reviewed, like all of them emerged at some point in time, right? Right.
Wow.
Come out on Tuesday and review was up Friday, right? Yeah. Up till when?
So we've had drama for decades.
Nothing like that, though.
Nothing like that.
No, that was, that was intense drama there.
But you can see then why they had so many people show up for the public hearings, stuff like that. And and in the, it's it's, I don't wanna say it's funny, but it's not surprising, I guess, that when you look at the minutes. Of the Board of Supervisor, it just says, uh, meeting recessed, to convene tomorrow at nine o'clock. And then in the paper, it's got, you know, s- seventy five people were here today, ninety five people here the next day. And a hundred and almost two hundred people the the other, the next day, given, all given time to speak. And uh you know, and Board of Supervisor minutes, it was just recess, meet again tomorrow. Public input.
It actually says that he resigned uh following a heart attack.
What's that?
Chris Olson?
Chris Olson.
Where are you getting that from?
The state versus um.
Oh, the state, they had that 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 long ago?
I I was only looking up to see, you know, the name Hasset, I went to someone in in high school named Melanie Hasset, just trying to see if that was possibly her father. That, you know, could very easily.
I didn't know they kept information that long ago.
Well, I didn't know either till I started kinda Googling stuff, but it says he resigned due to a heart attack, so I was just assuming.
The paper, the paper never said that.
Well, that's just.
It's KDSN keep records of all their stuff, remember, they used to have the hospital reports, yeah. I mean.
Who was in, who was out, what they're in for.
In the nineteen fifties, the hospital report was on the front page of every paper. Oh, really? Yeah, front page, who was in, who was out? So everybody knew. Oh, yeah. I could sleep easy, though. They done gave me a suspension, like, like. So all three of them. Right, the cliffhanger's over.
Would make one hell of an hour.
Jackstone, certainly interesting, the. I would think that that somebody was.
I like my husband, got a lot of them.
Boy, yeah.
Well, and the the other thing was, was the the Jackstones, like I said, they bought them from a company in Nebraska in forty seven, forty eight, forty nine. And fifty, in nineteen fifty one, they started buying them from a company from Dow City. It was called, I think, B L Concrete Company, or B H Concrete Company, and. It was not Haskin, that was the whole thing, is that the, the, the owner of the company, he died for, it came to trial. So they had his son came in and testified, and his son came and said that my dad and Hasset were really good friends. And I was always told that if I'm asked what the H stands for, that it stands for Helen, or my wife. When everybody knows that it stands for Hasset.
Hasset.
That Hasset was part owner of this concrete company in Dow City. And they tried to keep that under the rug, so that nobody knew. But in the paper, it would say that the ownership of that Dow City company is also under investigation. By the depart- by the grand jury and by the Department of Tax Criminal Investigation. Type of thing, we're all investigating that, but it never really came out, and I'm guessing, why did they ask for the ouster of the county farm guy? I couldn't understand why that, with those ousters and stuff, were just things that they, the facts, they didn't have to follow, you know, you didn't need to follow. It was just on the, if Stegeman, I guess, they decided to act on him, but like I said, he stayed. Fleming never resigned, and they both got reelected.
It says large quantities of Jackstone were made by Gibson under the name of H Materials Company.
Okay, it's the H, yep.
Purchased by the supervisors and paid with drainage warrants, defendants are nature Gibson, standless sons.
We should have, let's, famous Crawford County. I'm sure we could find one, then that'd be one somewhere, because when they started taking pictures of them, they would take pictures and say that they were. They had their own logo if they came from the Nebraska company, or if they came from the Dow City company, they had a little logo, so they knew which. And what year they were purchased.
No, we have it laying around.
Well.
Paul should have been up here to hear all that, they didn't have us.
Anyway, that's all I got.
Well, thank you.
That's good.
I agree. Anything else?
Yes, or a jazz.
Was very interesting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.